Okay, you are being livestreamed now.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for joining us for the special committee, the whole meeting for September 28, 2021. Acknowledging that we are meeting today on this traditional territory of Squamish Nation. A little bit behind time, we had a little bit of problem getting on, but I think we're all here now, I suspect. So thank everybody for joining us. I will call the meeting to order. I have 2:10 PM. Call the meeting to order. We have an agenda. For those of you who are visiting with us, there will be inquiries at the end of the presentations and reports. So you have an opportunity to have time to ask any questions. The whole purpose of this meeting is to discuss the short-term rental regulations and that we've been working on off and on for the past year. And hopefully, as a result of this meeting, we'll be able to move this issue forward to to either another public hearing or agreement. So I'm going to ask first of all from council for approval of the agenda. Councillor Crowell, Councillor Ladwick, thank you. All in favor of approval of the agenda? Thank you. That's approved. I'd like to acknowledge as well that Councillor Lumley is not with us today. He's he's out of town. So we're going to go to reports and it looks like the Director of Planning and I'm going to ask Director of Planning if you would introduce your guests.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And so the purpose of the report today is to review councils previously established goals and regulations on short-term rentals to ensure the new regulations are aligned with council's priorities. So as you know, we started this conversation in 2018. And because so much time has passed, I'm taking this opportunity to review what the goals were and prioritize them. So today we've got Third Space Planning here to assist with this goal prioritization workshop. Eric Swanson here is the principal and Shannon Jamison is the co-principal. So Third Space Planning prepared the short-term rental toolkit, which is appended to the staff report. So now I'll pass it over to Eric to start his presentation. So over to you, Eric.
Thank you very much. And it's great to be with you all today. I'm just going to start sharing my screen or attempt to, if that's all right. Okay, how are we doing? Can folks see that?
Yes, thank you.
Correct. So as introduced, hello, my name is Eric Swanson. I'm a principal of Third Space. And as the Director of Planning, I said I'm joined here today by my colleague Shannon Jameson, who's a senior advisor on this particular project and will be taking notes. And I'm pleased to be with you today from the traditional territory of the Akwongan-speaking peoples of the Iskwa M'asangis First Nations. So a little bit about us, we are based in Victoria, where we are a consultancy offering a range of policy and planning services. But over the last couple of years, we've developed a particular specialization in local short-term rental regulations. In 2020, we worked with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, UBCM, and others to write the comprehensive toolkit, which was just referred to, also included in the staff report, which you can refer to if interested. And we've been contracted to help you get your STR regulations closer to the finish line by way of this session. In preparation, we have reviewed all of the associated reports, draft bylaws and community feedback and recordings of related council and PDC meetings of the past year and a half or so. So we've got a pretty good sense of where things are at. What we'll be doing today, the purpose of today is to help you clarify and prioritize your goals for these regulations. So we're going to start with an introductory presentation. It'll take around 30 minutes or so to set up some key context. Then we will spend the remainder of our time having a facilitated discussion that'll be broken into five main parts, including clarifying the intent of the four goals that Gibson's has already stated for these regulations, flagging any goals that might be missing, organizing those goals by level of priority, noting any areas of alignment or misalignment when it comes to prioritization. And in the time that we have, we can dig into any areas of misalignment and see if you might be able to resolve them today. I just want to say a big thanks to each of you for engaging with a workbook that was sent out in advance or otherwise sending thoughts. We knew some of the questions in that workbook might be a little tricky to understand or address before you saw this intro presentation and without me giving the full setup, but we decided it was worth it to get more out of our time together today. So thank you for your patience and effort there. As this is a council meeting, when I say facilitated discussion, I mean that while the mayor will obviously continue to formally chair and facilitate this meeting, the discussion will likely proceed more efficiently if I'm able to ask questions of you directly. So we'll give that a shot. Before the end of the session, we will summarize the progress we've made and carve up time for you to give direction on next steps. So let's get into the introductory presentation. We're going to start by recapping what a short-term rental is and some of the potential benefits and harms, including a closer look at housing impacts. Then we'll talk about where local regulation tends to fit in a grander scheme of things. Next, we'll get a lay of the land by mapping out the different kinds of short-term rentals and short-term rental regulations out there. And we'll look at some fresh data describing Gibson's current short-term rental market. We'll then conclude by servicing seven key trade-offs that local governments end up wrestling with, either implicitly or explicitly on this issue. And by making them explicit, you'll be better able to clarify and prioritize your goals in the discussion that follows. Okay, so let's start by quickly recapping what a short-term rental is. Every local government will tweak this definition based on terms that are already in the bylaws and you've obviously been speaking with this issue for some time. So we're just going to speak generally. So compared to hotels, motels and the like, which offer guest accommodation in zones intended for that purpose, i.e. commercial zones, people normally refer to, or people normally use the term short-term rental to refer to guest accommodation created in residential zones and dwellings. Compared to traditional bed and breakfasts, which have long offered guest accommodation residential zones, short-term rentals often involve renting of entire dwellings and can occur in any housing type. For example, you normally wouldn't find a traditional bed and breakfast in a condo tower. And you don't, often don't have to interact with anyone, so it's more private. Even that, though, is not totally new. For decades, people have been using classified ads, et cetera, to offer second homes and vacation rentals for short periods. So the biggest evolution here then is all about this last piece. We now have giant international platforms like Airbnb and VRBO that make this whole process super easy, which has led to a massive surge in this kind of activity around the world, more than 1,000% increase over the past 10 years. There's a tiny little blue bar at the bottom of this diagram. It's just noting that you can also get short-term rentals in units that aren't technically a residential dwelling unit, and we'll speak to that a little bit more later. So this disruptive surge in short-term rental activity brings with it an array of potential benefits and harms, many of which you've already identified through the process in Gibson so far in your own deliberations. So I'm going to go over them quickly. You know, potential benefits include things like extra income for some local residents, higher housing values, although that's also a harm, the quick provision of a diversity of guest accommodation and support for aspects of the local tourism economy, though often at the expense of commercial accommodation providers. Some of the potential harms include things like how a range of housing impacts, harmed commercial accommodation providers, loss of government revenue and increases in contraventions of local regulation as accommodation switches over more and more to short-term rentals. Aver disruption, reinforced inequities. You know, for example, in that last piece, the expansion of short-term rentals tends to put renters and those groups who are more likely to be renters at an even greater socioeconomic disadvantage. And impacts can often be most felt in specific neighborhoods or on particular streets. So overall, the impacts of short-term rentals tend to be unevenly distributed, which is one of the challenges. Given the recent release of the Sunshine Coast Housing Needs Assessment Report, I wanted to spend a minute unpacking the impact on housing a little bit more. First, it's important to note that there are some limited housing benefits to short-term rentals. Specifically, it can allow individual operators to sometimes afford otherwise unaffordable properties. But at a systems level, the net impacts on housing largely stack towards harm, specifically in communities already facing housing pressures. And with majority of that harm caused by so-called non-principle dwelling unit short-term rentals, which is a term we're going to dive into and talk about more later. This harm is fairly well-established in the literature and shows up in a couple of ways. The first is that short-term rentals decrease the availability of housing by pulling it out of the long-term market, meaning fewer homes to buy or rent. And thus, this impact can be relatively straightforward to measure. Second, short-term rentals decrease system-wide affordability of housing by increasing its economic value. For example, you can sometimes make more money short-term renting than long-term renting and by reducing supply. Now, it can be difficult to precisely calculate just how much more expensive homes become to buy or rent when short-term rentals are allowed. But researchers have used different methods in various communities across North America to produce estimates that range from a percent or two increase in rents or purchase costs all the way up to 30% plus, you know, so potentially quite significant. The takeaway then is that when you see graphs like this from the Regional Needs Assessment, you can think of short-term rentals not as the cause of this kind of rapid deterioration in housing affordability. There's obviously a lot more going on, but as a clear and addressable exacerbating factor. So faced with the rapid expansion of the industry and its impacts, you've been working diligently in Gibson's to craft a regulatory program. Your job would be made quite a bit easier, frankly, if the federal and provincial governments did a little bit more. For example, ensuring that all appropriate taxes are collected, that platforms are compelled to remove illegal listings, that certain key data is shared and that you're supported with other tools and resources. And our own toolkit contains recommendations that you could consider adding to your own advocacy agendas on this issue. And similar recommendations will likely be included in an upcoming report from a UBCM and provincial short-term rental advisory group on this matter in our understanding. However, there are decisions around the scale, distribution and integration of short-term rentals that are fundamentally up to local governments. So you're doing the right thing, continuing to prioritize this issue. It's also good to keep in mind that landlords and stratas can add their own restrictions on top of whatever you decide to do. So what I'd like to do now is walk you through the different types of short-term rentals that you and other local governments must decide to allow, disallow, or otherwise limit through associated types of regulation. And the goal with this section is to help you think about the various types of short-term rentals and short-term rental regulations in a systematic way and also to flag risks associated with regulatory complexity. What we're going to do is start with a blank slide and slowly build out a diagram that can help you slice and dice short-term rentals by zone, unit type, host type, and intensity, which you can then layer other types of regulations on top of. So the first distinction we like to make with short-term rentals is related to the underlying zoning. If we're talking about guest accommodation in commercial zones, then we might call this kind of thing commercial guest accommodation. This is just a generic term. The Gibson's equivalent might be your tourist accommodation designation. Commercial guest accommodation can be distinguished from what we might call residential guest accommodation, which is accommodation in zones or portions of zones intended for residential use. You know, the line between these two, you know, is dotted because there are plenty of examples of mixed-use zones, in which case you can can make the distinction between commercial and residential guest accommodation based on the portion of the zone involved or the nature of the units. And this brings us to the second type of distinction we can make, which is based on unit type. For this category of commercial guest accommodation, unit types will include your hotel and motel suites, but it can also include dwelling units that just happen to be located in commercial zones or portions of zones intended for commercial use. You know, for mixed-use zones, like, you know, that where that beachcomber suite is or in your upper Gibson's commercial district zone, where the intent of the zone includes commercial below and, you know, options for residential above, you might choose to consider short-term rentals of any of those dwelling units as a kind of residential guest accommodation, because it's taking place in a portion of the zone and or in a unit originally intended for or permitted for residential use. Anyways, a bit of a gray area here terminologically that every local government needs to work out. When it comes to residential guest accommodation over here on the right, we then recommend that local governments start by distinguishing units based on whether or not they are the operator's so-called principal dwelling unit, which is a technical term that we're going to take a brief detour to define more precisely. As per usual, different local governments will use terms differently. So we'll focus on conveying the concept. And we'll define a dwelling unit as a suite of rooms in a building suitable for residential occupancy by one or more people who normally live together and then as a separate entrance, kitchen and bathroom facilities. This is pretty close to how Gibson's uses this term currently. A principal dwelling unit for our purposes is, and in short, is the suite of rooms that makes up someone's primary home, not including any secondary suites or other units on the same property. This definition is narrower than how Gibson's currently uses the same term. But what we're basically looking to do with this, with this definition is to help distinguish between separate potential homes. For example, here's a property that was for sale in Gibson's early this month. It's got a three-bedroom upper unit and a two-bedroom lower unit, separate entrances and separate kitchens and bathrooms for each with a shared laundry. In other words, what you're looking at here are two separate dwelling units on the same lot and title. Here's the floor plan. If you bought this property, lived in the upstairs unit and rented out the downstairs unit, you might intuitively think of this whole property as your so-called principal residence. And the term principal dwelling unit in Gibson's current bylaws would also include both floors. But the concept we're trying to outline here is one where so long as you're just living upstairs, your principal dwelling unit is only ever going to mean the upper floor. If you had a renter living downstairs, their principal dwelling unit would be the downstairs unit. This fine-grained use of the term allows us to distinguish between two separate potential homes, which is important because it allows us to better manage a number of key trade-offs associated with short-term rentals. So going back to a, our diagram, then, we can include principal dwelling short-term rentals, which is a short-term rental that takes place in an operator's principal dwelling unit. And this includes short-term renting a room or rooms in one's home or short-term renting the whole unit while the operator is away. And we can distinguish this from non-principle dwelling unit short-term rentals, which are short-term rentals, pardon me, that take place in a dwelling unit that is not the operator's principal dwelling unit. And this can include people short-term renting their second home or cottage, people short-term renting another unit on the same lot as their principal dwelling unit or cottage, for example, a secondary suite or an accessory dwelling, as well as people and even corporations renting out whole units and properties that they never occupy, using it solely for income and investment purposes. Then we can add a third category of non-dwelling unit short-term rentals, which is a short-term rental of something that isn't technically a dwelling. This would include things like RVs, boats, yurts, suites without a kitchen or bathroom facilities, this sort of thing. These tend to make up a very small fraction of short-term rentals. For example, in our scan, we only found one of these currently listed in Gibson's. The third distinction we can make, we're getting in the weeds here. I'm going to pull us out, but I'm going to spend a little bit longer in the weeds. So the third distinction we can make in this categorization system is related to host or operator type. Here you can categorize short-term rentals by whether or not the operator is onsite during the booking. For example, in Gibson's, you're currently using this criteria to split non-principle dwelling unit short-term rentals into what you call hosted and unhosted short-term rentals. Or you can categorize short-term rentals by whether or not there's at least a full-time resident onsite, who can be a tenant or an owner or and who may or may not be the operator. And this is a category that Tofino uses, for example. Or you can look to whether or not the operator is at least a local resident, for example, so they can better respond to any issues. Here in Gibson's, you've been discussing limiting unhosted short-term rentals to local resident operators. And in some cases, no distinction is made at this host or operator level, and it can be anyone. In addition, to considering whether you want to permit or disallow any of these categories of short-term rental or variations thereof, you can also categorize and regulate things based on intensity of use. This can include regulating the frequency of use, also known as nightcaps. For example, Bowen Island has decided that 120 nights per year is the threshold above which a unit becomes categorized as commercial guest accommodation and is therefore regulated differently. Additional layers of regulation can include specifying the number of guests or bedrooms that are allowed per type of unit, regulating the number of units per operator. For example, in Gibson's, you're considering allowing up to two units per operator, one hosted and one unhosted at this time. And you can also consider regulations that target short-term rental density. For example, regulating density at the lot level. For example, in Gibson's, you've talked about limiting short-term rentals to one unit per property. In Saskatoon, they limit the percentage of units in any given apartment or condo building that can be used as a short-term rental, as another example. You can also regulate density at the street or neighborhood level. For example, Nelson BC does this. Or you can regulate density at the community level. For example, Squamish is capping the number of non-principle dwelling unit short-term rentals at 30 over the next couple of years. On top of all of this, you can add layers of regulation that target health and safety, parking, neighborhood accountability, et cetera, as well as foundational regulations that bring all of this activity up to the surface through things such as business licensing. So what we end up with here is a categorization system that you can understand as generally moving from restrictive on the left to permissive on the right. Many communities that prioritize housing tend to build regulations limiting short-term rentals to principal dwelling units. Other communities for which housing is less of a concern, open up the market broadly and just use, for example, business licensing to keep track of things. Often, the instinct is to try to find a sense of balance from within this buffet of options. And you end up in what we like to call the messy middle, which is where you try to allow some kinds of non-principle dwelling unit short-term rentals, but not others, and put a range of limits on them or to manage for particular goals. Here's the takeaway from all of this. The takeaway I want to leave you with from this complex diagram is that with one brief look at a diagram like this, you can see just how complex structure rental regulations can become. And if you're not crystal clear on what your goals are and the respective level of priority, you can end up with a grab bag of regulations derived from all of these categories that may individually seem balanced but quickly lose their clarity and coherence as soon as you try to put them all together. One of the consequences of having so many regulatory options is that you very quickly get differences in approach between even neighboring communities, including in how each community chooses to categorize short-term rentals. For example, I'm going to list some adjacent communities here. Squamish has chosen a primary categorization system that splits short-term rentals into principal dwelling units and non-principle dwelling units, much as we did in the diagram there. And they use an intensity threshold based on number of nights rented to set license fees for the first category. Now, this is a housing-first approach. Bowen Island does things a bit differently. They start by distinguishing between short-term rentals of partial dwellings, which they continue to refer to as bed and breakfasts, and entire dwellings. They then use an intensity threshold on top of this to distinguish between what they call residential guest accommodation, which is 120 nights per year or less, and commercial guest accommodation, which is more than that. This reflects an approach that prioritizes housing less than Squamish and instead targets homeowner flexibility and a greater use of residential zones for guest accommodation. The SCRD does things differently still. Unlike Bowen Island, they unify the terms bed and breakfast and short-term rental to mean the same thing. And their primary categorization relates to the presence or absence of an onsite resident operator, kind of like Tofino, whereby short-term rentals are only allowed when such a person is present. They then use an additional layer pertaining to zone and parcel size to specify the number of bedrooms that can be rented. In Gibson's, you're currently using a categorization system that's different from all of these. As laid out in the staff report, you started by distinguishing between principal residences and non-principal residences. And then you layered on a custom categorization of hosted versus unhosted, which was targeted to, for example, manage neighborhood impacts. I note all of this because I know there is a desire expressed through your community engagement and your own deliberations to achieve some consistency on the coast and when it comes to your short-term rental regulations. And looking at this slide, you can see that some of your most closely related jurisdictions are already using quite distinct categorization systems, which reflect their own goals and priorities. So while consistency is always nice, one of the best practices we note in our toolkit is that there is no one-size-fits-all approach and it's okay to have your own goals and priorities and categorization systems and regulations that flow from that. And in confirming your own goals and priorities, it's good to have a sense of some local data on short-term rental activity in Gibson's. Until platforms are compelled to share this key data, the best we can do is rely on third-party providers, of which there are several. The data I'll be showing here comes from a provider called AirDNA, which pulls information from the top two platforms, VRBO and Airbnb. Here is a map of all current listings on Airbnb and VRBR, at least as of time of scan. So this was September 6. And you can see that they're scattered around with a concentration in and around the Lower Village. This graph charts Gibson's total short-term rental, active short-term rental listings on Airbnb and VRBO from Q2 2018 through Q2 of this year. The dotted line represents the start of the pandemic and the highlighted data points are for the third quarter of 2018, 2019, and 2020, representing the peak summer months of July, August and September. And you can see that summertime listings grew from 2018 to 2019 and then were tamped down last year by the pandemic. However, when we switch to year-over-year comparisons for the second quarter, you can see the pandemic's impacts are relatively minor, merely stalling the growth in listings for a little while, such that this year's second quarter listings are up 28% compared to three years ago. The takeaway here is that short-term rental growth in Gibson's has been steady with a short pandemic-induced interruption and that this growth, this growth has occurred even though most operators likely know their listings to be in contravention of your current bylaws. So if Gibson's new short-term rental regulations are designed to be more permissive than the status quo, a reasonable expectation would be at minimum a continuation of the steady growth with potential for significant, for a significant uptick. Breaking down the composition of current listings in Gibson's, we're looking at 92 as of the second quarter of this year, 80 of which are for entire homes, throughout 90%. And those entire home listings represent about 4% of your total housing stock. We then examined listing details for every single one of these entire home listings and found that roughly one-third of these were for main floors or whole properties. So this would include people renting out their whole cottage or vacation property. If these units weren't permitted as short-term rentals, you would see some of them left empty, some of them rented out long-term, some of them potentially sold. The other two-thirds of the listings were for secondary suites and accessory dwellings, many of which, if not permitted as short-term rentals, would likely return to the long-term rental market at some point. For illustrative purposes, if all of these units, so we're talking about the secondary suites and accessory dwellings here, were returned to your long-term rental market, you'd immediately increase your rental housing stock by around eight and a half percent with a diversity of unit sizes and types. Not saying that would happen immediately or necessarily, but good to keep in mind. When it comes to operators, you've got 30% or so of units being run by multi-unit operators, so people for whom this is more than a casual thing. And you've got four multi-unit And you've got four multi-unit short-term rental properties, including at least one traditional B and B lists on these new platforms. And you've got operators earning a median monthly revenue of a little over twenty-eight hundred dollars over the course of a year, peaking in August around five thousand dollars and then dropping back through the winter months. So I'm just gonna grab a quick drink of water here. So this brings us to the final section of our introductory presentation. Earlier on, we talked about the potential benefits and harms associated with short-term rentals, and we flagged the risk associated with trying to kind of land in the middle. So rather than seek some general balancing of benefits and harms, this is an opportunity to instead get really clear about specific trade-offs you end up having to make. Each of your current short-term rental goals is associated with trade-offs, both within each goal itself and between different goals. So what we're going to do now is explicitly surface some of the key ones so that we can refer back to them later. And you've seen some of these already in the workbooks that were circulated. I'm gonna show each of the trade-offs on a spectrum that moves from a more restrictive approach on the left to a more permissive approach corresponding to that big diagram we built earlier. As a reminder, here are Gibson's four current goals. Your first current goal is all about helping homeowners earn added revenue. And the basic trade-off with this goal is about where you want that revenue to come from. On one side, you're responding to this desire by encouraging homeowners to seek added revenue through the provision of long-term rentals, perhaps making that process easier. On the other side of the spectrum, you're encouraging homeowners to seek revenue from short-term rentals. The trade-off, of course, is that the further right you move on the spectrum, the less likely it is that people are going to choose to create and offer long-term rentals. I'm putting a little cloud in the middle of these trade-off illustrations to flag that while we intuitively, again, want to find that balance when it comes to these choices, the consequence of landing in the middle is added complexity in both design and implementation, often with a persistent cloudiness around the goal itself and difficulty in evaluating success of the program later on. So you can create a sense of balance at any point on these spectrums, for example, by managing unintended consequences. So where possible, what I'm saying is that we encourage you to try to clearly prioritize one side or the other, if you can. Your second current goal is all about ensuring a good number and diversity of accommodation options in Gibson's. The basic trade-off in this goal is about where you want that accommodation to be created and offered. Specifically, do you want to encourage commercial guest accommodation in commercial zones? Or do you want to encourage residential guest accommodation in residential zones? The trade-off here is that the further right you move on the spectrum, the less likely it is that commercial accommodation providers are going to be able to compete and upgrade and expand their offerings over time. In many communities, commercial providers are starting to build out units to meet modern demand for more space amenities, unique experiences, and the like. So you need to decide whether you want to encourage that or instead to kind of lean on your residential zones to provide those units. Your third current goal is about keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods. And if you tease this goal apart, there are actually a couple of associated trade-offs. The first is about neighborhood character or feel, which relates back to that tourism trade-off. Because it's about the degree to which you want to prioritize residential use of residential zones or portions thereof on the left, or open those zones up to commercial activity on the right. And the more commercial activity, the greater the impact on neighborhood character. It makes use zones, for example, in your upper Gibson's commercial district, which envisages, you know, the commercial below and the option for residential above. The question then becomes how much of the residential portion of that zone do you want to open up to this kind of commercial use? And as I pointed out previously, some municipalities kind of seek to regulate the density in that kind of mixed-use zone, so that, you know, the percentage of residential units that can be used as short-term rentals. So the second trade-off here relates to what we might call neighborhood disturbances, which are about concrete issues like noise, parking, garbage, et cetera. And the trade-off here is a bit more operational. On the left, you're relying on the presence of the operator to mitigate issues. And on the right, you're relying on other forms of accountability. I've removed the cloud here because you can really kind of land anywhere on the spectrum. It's, like I said, more just kind of an operational choice. You can find a neighborhood accountability anywhere here. The final goal is about retaining long-term rental supply in Gibson's. You know, but in case it helps, I'm going to present three trade-offs that relate to housing just generally. And the first trade-off relates to housing availability and is about your tolerance for potential housing loss impacting both renters and prospective owner residents. On the left, you can choose to have low tolerance for housing loss. And on the right, you can have a higher tolerance for housing loss. For example, if your community has more than enough supply. The next trade-off is a more nuanced one and relates to homeownership affordability. On the left, you tend to support future owners. Why? Because the more permissive you are about short-term rentals, the higher the value, i.e. the cost of local housing becomes, forcing future owners to pay more. And you might think that, well, those future owners can just short-term rent their unit too and make up some of that extra cost. But over time, what ends up happening is that you start reaching a new equilibrium where that potential short-term rental income becomes kind of fully costed into the unit. And in any case, it'll be the current owners who benefit the most. The final trade-off really boils down to prioritizing support for local renters versus current owners, i.e. who needs more help. The basic reality underlying this trade-off is that the more permissive you are about short-term rentals, the harder it's going to be to find a stable place to rent long-term, and the more it's going to cost. You'll note the qualifier in here about current owners because you're not necessarily helping future owners by being more permissive about short-term rentals. By putting all these trade-offs together, you can begin to see how they bundle. Everything on the left tends to go together, and everything on the right tends to go together. If you were to map out the nature of a community's individual regulations on these kinds of trade-off spectrums, and they all tended to bundle towards one side or the other, that's an indication of clear goals and priorities and a more coherent and cohesive program. If instead, some land on the right, some land on the left, or all of them are kind of aiming for the middle, that's a sign of internal tension and potentially insufficient clarity on priorities, which will often leave you with a less coherent system overall. For example, in from your own deliberations, on the one hand, your first listed goal is about helping homeowners earn added revenue from short-term rentals, which is supported by the idea to allow up to one unhosted unit per local homeowner. This is quite a permissive approach. On the other hand, the proposed sixty-day cap on those unhosted units would significantly limit the potential revenue to less than you could likely make on a long-term rental, kind of calling into question what is being achieved with this particular combination of proposed regulations. This kind of tension is not unusual at all. You know, you're not the only ones, but I point this out to say that, you know, now really is a great time to be clarifying and prioritizing your goals. So that concludes our introductory presentation. Quite a bit of nuance there, I know. But hopefully, some of it helped you think about this topic in a fresh way. And what we'll do next is move on to the facilitated discussion. We will build on the thinking that you've already put into the workbooks to the extent that you've had a chance to, and to clarify and prioritize each of your current goals. But I'm happy to take any questions before we move on. So.
Council, I'm just going to keep that open with Eric. Please, please conduct yourselves accordingly and direct your questions at this time to Eric, Director or Director of Planning. Counselor Ludwig.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. That was a really helpful presentation. This is a question that could be answered later, but whatever, I've got the opportunity, so I'll take it now. Do you know of any other businesses that are allowed in the residential zone without the homeowner occupying the building? I guess what I'm getting at is why did we ever think that allowing S T Rs in a residential zone unoccupied was okay? I can't buy a house and open up a coffee shop in it because with the rationale that, well, I eat in houses anyway, so therefore it's okay to open up a coffee shop. So, yeah, I'm just wondering why this ever was ever believed to be acceptable.
That's a really good question. I hadn't actually thought of it that way before, you know, you you tend to permit certain types of home occupation, kind of business-like uses, but you know, the person tends to be there, you know, conducting the business, whether it's like a hair salon or what have you. So I cannot think of any others like that, but I would defer to the Director of Planning if she might have some examples.
Thank you.
No, I don't, sorry. I mean, I think that the direction from council was to look at allowing unhosted short-term rentals. That was the last conversation we had. Allowing them on unhosted properties. So that's why we're back here to reassess whether that is actually a goal because it changes the direction that we were going in.
Absolutely. And I've always been on the other side of that. That's why I was just, I was trying to make a point. So I think my point is made. Thank you very much.
Counselor Kroll.
Thank you. Great presentation, Erica. And I just wondered, have you can you elaborate? There is a new platform out called Fair B and B where people subscribe to the platform, but where we're dependent on the two percent revenue that comes back to the region. With Fair B and B, fifty percent of the booking fee is paid back into the community. And do you know how successful and would it be possible under a business licensing to restrict operators within your community to use a service like Fair B and B?
So what Counselor Kroll is referring to is a social purpose short-term rental platform that was originally created in Europe as a kind of more ethical alternative to the major platforms like Airbnb and V R B O. Whereas you were saying a portion of revenues are kind of returned, you know, to the community, the operators also you know, confirm that, for example, the unit is their principal dwelling unit, so housing isn't being lost and this sort of thing. Right now, that alternative platform has not come to Canada. You know, however, I can say that there are people working on it and seeking, you know, establishing kind of the groundwork, but it's not here yet. If it were to come, you know, would you be able to limit short-term rentals specifically to those listed on that platform? I suppose. I haven't encountered any municipalities that have tried that yet.
Counselor Kroll again.
Thank you, Eric. Just in follow-up, some of the firms that actually monitor the activity, you know, because the huge problem with Airbnb obviously is monitoring the activity within the envelope and ensuring that, you know, revenue streams are appropriate. The cost involved with using these monitoring systems, I understand, is it's not cheap. But then so is hiring, like the city of Vancouver have a whole department that just monitors the short-term rental activity in the city of Vancouver. And they're also able to put on a T O T, which we can't do. So I'm just wondering, the cost of using a platform to monitor the activity of the is, would it be reasonable to recover that cost in your business licensing structuring?
Yes. The first thing I will say is that when you're finalizing the design of every regulation, this is one key consideration. You know, how easy it will be to enforce, you know, from any number of angles, including access to data. And you will have different options. You can pay third parties a little bit more and seek to recoup that through business licensing fees. But there are also some more kind of DIY data approaches that communities have used successfully. You know, for example, in Victoria and Nelson, I know they're doing it a little bit more DIY, and that's something that can be explored at that stage. But cost recovery is often kind of a component or a simultaneous goal with all of this.
Thank you.
And it should be noted that Vancouver, they're a little bit of an exception because they've used their cloud and their kind of special status to negotiate a data sharing agreement with at least Airbnb, so they get a little bit more data than everybody else, which is an advantage and not an advantage that Gibson's is likely to get, or frankly, any other local government for the time being.
Other questions, counsel? Counselor DeAndre.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eric and Shannon. Yeah, excellent work, really clarifying. And I think I understood better the struggles we are having. I know we discussed something about zoning. I understand that commercial zones, they are already established, but have you encountered any municipality that's trying to zone certain areas where perhaps the residents would be more comfortable in becoming some, not necessarily commercial zone, but allowed for S T Rs? And have you encountered anything like that? Because that's something that we had a discussion in council, perhaps certain areas we could say yes, but I'm trying to figure out, well, if we're gonna go and get input from the community, that could be a challenging thing as well.
Yes, so you can find municipalities that, to the extent that they allow short-term rentals, try to concentrate in particular zones. You know, for example, mixed-use zones for which the intent does include some kind of commercial purpose and activity, and I know Gibson's has examples of that. And so the question there is, how much of it do you want to, you know, how much of it do you want to permit in those kind of mixed-use zones? And there are different tools you can use to get at that. You know, temporary use permits or other things, but that's probably something to explore kind of once you've clarified your goals and priorities, and then you can kind of get into exactly how much of it you want to permit.
Counselor Kroll again.
Thank you. In your report, Eric, I thought I saw something to the effect that there is investigation into legislation where you have a standalone house that is, you know, the entire house is rented as a short-term rental, and that there is investigation into legislation that that property would actually be subject to commercial taxation as opposed to residential taxation. Do you have any more information on that?
I know that, for example, U B C M, you know, have passed multiple resolutions kind of going back years, asking the province for a little bit more authority or at least clarity on how to use the tools at the disposal to, you know, classify certain properties as commercial such that commercial taxes can kind of be collected. And I know that the province, you know, in the response to kind of U B C M resolutions have essentially said, oh, you can already do that. But then there's like disagreement about the extent to which you can can or cannot do that. And so I cannot add any additional clarity on that at this time. But it's a consistent ask for more clarity from the province.
Thank you.
Eric, do you know how B C Assessment views a home with a short-term rental, or for that matter, bed and breakfast in it? There's a, they are supposed to assess not based on zoning, but based on use. So they base their assessment impacted by the use of that property as a short-term rental in addition to, say, a long-term rental, a long-term occupancy?
Really good question. I do not. That would be really good to find out. I'm not sure if the Director of Planning or my colleague Shannon has an answer to that.
I have actually had a conversation with an appraiser at B C Assessment and asked that question. And the person I spoke to basically said, no, there was no distinguished difference from residential unit and a short-term rental. But it was something that they had been asked a bunch of times and they were going to be reassessing. So that was back in twenty eighteen, probably, or twenty nineteen. So at this point, I don't know if it has changed or not.
It might be something we would follow up on in the sense that it would assume presumably increase the assessed value, which would increase the taxation on that property. Other questions at this time before Eric proceeds with the next part of the presentation? Okay, see none. Eric, I'm gonna turn Okay, see none. Eric, I'm going to turn it back over to you and Shannon and carry on.
Fantastic. So bear with me. I'll just swap out applications here and move from PowerPoint to the document that I had intended to have up. I was gonna stop sharing and grab that be with you in one second. Pardon the delay. Here, I think this is it. Yes. Here we go. So you should all have a link to this. What I have done is added in all of the responses to the workbook from those who are able to give them for each of the questions. And I've got an agenda here. So we're moving now into the facility to discussion portion of this session. We've got around an hour and forty five minutes left. I know you've got, you know, more to do today. So councillor Ladwick?
So can I just ask that you expand it on your screen?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Thanks.
Zoom in here. Let's try 150%. How's that?
Better.
And based on what I've seen in the workbooks, I'm actually going to rearrange this agenda somewhat because I think it's going to create a better use of everybody's time. So I was originally going to go and kind of dive in again to those individual questions of clarification and then get into goal prioritization. But what I noticed is that there seems to be an emerging alignment on order of priority for goals. So what I'm going to do is I'm quickly going to confirm whether that's true or not. Kind of establish some tentative alignment there. Then we're kind of going to go back into some of those individual questions, clarifying what you mean by your current goals. And then before we conclude, I'll go back to the prioritization and you can confirm by a vote to to give the direction to staff moving forward. So with that, I'm going to show the results here. The formatting of this table isn't, there must be a better way to show this, but what what this shows is that there is a bundling of goals. The three councillors who were able to list their priorities, put the retaining of long term rental supply or keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods either as their number one or number two goal. And you can see that kind of bottom left here. There's also alignment on number three and number four goals with, you know, three councillors selecting added homeowner revenue or providing tourist options as number three or number four. This is important because these goals actually naturally bundle together. Keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods tends to lean a little bit more restrictive. So does protecting long term rental supply and likewise with the other two. So what I'd like to do now, for example, Mayor Beamish, kind of get your thoughts on this. You know, can we confirm a current alignment where, you know, the top two goals are retaining long term rental supply in Gibson's and keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods? We don't need to worry about defined green order, but they're in the top two. And the bottom two goals are the secondary goals, you might we might call them, are providing tourists with accommodation options and responding to the needs of homeowners with added revenue. I'm going to throw this back to you now and have you discuss whether there's some initial alignment there on on those two bundles. If that makes sense.
It does. Yeah, I understand. And councillor, how do you feel about that? My view, retaining long term rental supply in Gibson's is a priority and is one that we need to keep foremost in our in our minds. Providing tourists with accommodation options or staying in Gibson's. As long as we are going to enable and expand, if allow expansion of short term rentals for bed and breakfast, there's no incentive for places like the Cedars Inn to upgrade. There's no incentive for the Ritz Hotel, which had thirty rooms and is now being operated as a rental for rental units as opposed to hotel, because there's just no way to make money in the hotel business as long as there's competition at the ground level. And that's a big problem that some of these operators are facing. I see providing tourist accommodation across the board, not just in terms of short term rentals, but in commercial operations as well. And I think that we are undersupplied in terms of hotel accommodation in this town. A good quality hotel accommodation personally. Those are my thoughts on that. Response to the needs of residents who homeowners who need added revenue, I agree with that. I think there's a, I think because of the market, we have a lot of people who are who are property rich, but can't afford to live there anymore. And so allowing them to have an income from a short term rental in a bedroom, unused bedroom or an unused basement, I think is valuable. That I think the and there's different values in that. I mean, let's face it, those people who have those prime locations in the community with views or waterfront are going to be the prime operators of short term rentals in terms of people wanting to come and stay for an experience, in my view.
If I could just interject, and what I'm hearing, Mayor Beamish, is that you seem aligned with the top two goals for the program being retaining long term rental supply and keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods, those kind of the top two, with the secondary ones being added revenue for homeowners and providing tourists with accommodation options. Is that a fair reading?
In my view, it is. How the rest of the council feels, councillor Croll?
Thank you, Mayor Beamish. I think further to your comment about added revenue for homeowners, it's principal residents of the of the the building in question. You know, I personally know a number of short term operators who, you know, as you say, are in a financial situation where they need more income. And short term rental does provide that for them. Providing rental income for someone who has three homes in the community and they're operating them all at, you know, as short term rentals, it's not our job to create an environment for that type of of business. It's, you know, they're not paying commercial taxes back into the community. And I think the benefits to the community are relatively negligible.
Councillor Ladwick?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I I agree with Eric's assessment. I myself did make keeping the scale of business appropriate in residential neighborhoods as my number one priority, because I felt that there was a number of spin off benefits that came from that, including retaining long term rental supply in Gibson's, as well as maintaining, you know, character in a neighborhood and, you know, a number of spin off effects that that come from that. So I I feel that this breakdown is certainly matches my my priorities.
I think that from my purpose and clarification too, I I do distinguish neighborhoods as being the single family typical neighborhood that we we see as opposed to a commercial neighborhood. Because I I do see there's some benefit in the commercial tourism area where the Beachcomber's bed and breakfast, Beachcomber's operation should be, it could be operated in a commercial area. It's not a residential area. The absence of neighbors or neighborliness in that particular unit is not going to affect anybody. But I think it should be taxed as a commercial unit as opposed to a residential unit in a commercial zone.
Okay, any other thoughts on that? Otherwise I can sum this quick one up and then return us to some individual questions.
Council, do you have?
Thank you. It's a it's a thought and a question. When I, when you were mentioning, Eric, that's 4% or at least 8.5% of housing stock are in S T R. So I did the math. Yeah, I think we are, we have around twenty two thousand residents. So that will be 190 homes. That would represent 380 people that will be housed. Is it perhaps maybe the director of planning can confirm too, is it a fair calculation?
I could quickly just clarify how I calculated it and then I can ask the director of planning to jump in. And so that percentage is based on households. And so I took the number of households, which can, which aligns with the kind of the number of units in Gibson's and divided the number of secondary suites and accessory dwellings currently listed on Airbnb and V P R B O, divided that by the number of total rental households listed in the regional needs assessment for Gibson's. And that's what came out to around eight and a half percent.
Okay, I I just want to confirm if this number that I came up, around 200 possible rentals, and that would be at least 400 people or 380 around that, is it a fair calculation?
I guess it would depend on the number of people you are assuming would inhabit a particular rental unit. Yeah. And I'm not sure what standard Gibson's or the, you know, the regional area might use for that.
But even in a minimum range will be 200, right? To the exact number. So that's. Perhaps the director of planning, I don't know. I just want to, I want to understand if this is a a number that it makes sense.
I'm not, I I guess I can't really answer that right now. I'd have to look at your numbers and see where they came from. But off the top of my head, I'm not sure if that's accurate, because the number that Eric is speaking about is specifically rental housing. And you're looking at all units are all residential units in Gibson's. So they're they're different numbers.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so.
Take you, Eric, like take you back to your ninety two S T Rs.
Ninety two.
That you had talked talked about. I actually thought that the eighty seven percent was that the eight, sorry, eight eight percent came out of that ninety two percent. Ninety two, brother.
Yes, you've got ninety two current listings, eighty seven percent of which are for entire homes. And then two thirds of those entire homes are secondary suites or what appear to be secondary suites or accessory dwellings. And that's where you get that eight and a half percent from.
That's right. There's not only a half percent of all the residential units in the Gibson's. It's just, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, sorry, Eric. Go ahead.
Oh, not at all. So this is great. You know, what you have then confirmed is some initial alignment on bucketing of goals, you know, number one and number two and number three, number four. We're going to have an opportunity to, before the end of the meeting, to see if we can get even more fine grained to go one, two, three, four. And we'll see if there's a possibility to do that. And I'm actually going to bring that Beachcomber example back because that's a good one to help do a little bit more fine grained distinction there. But now I would like us to return to these lists, this list of clarification questions, which many of you have kind of started to wrestle with. And I'm going to selectively kind of choose which ones to focus on. I noted that, you know, a couple of them were kind of worded somewhat confusingly. Granted, we may not choose to dwell on those. I'm going to try to pick the ones that are likely to help give you the most clarity in the time that we have. So I'm going to start with the first listed goal of Gibson's, which is responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to have added revenue. And I've included here the two trade offs that are associated with this goal. And if you want, I'm not sure those of you who have double monitors, but if you have a staff report, if you have the staff report and there's that kind of compiled diagram with the trade offs, you may find it handy to refer into that as well. So what I, you know, what we asked in this workbook was for some clarity about the specific types of homeowners and homeowner situations that this goal was intended to target. And so we were we're trying to really pick those out. For example, we asked whether it was a goal of council to help owners, whether they be residents or cottagers, who could otherwise rent out a unit long term. If it was a goal to help those types of homeowners earn more money, then could otherwise be made from a long term rental. And, you know, the answer we got from this is compiled. I've thrown everybody's answers in here. I checked in with the director of, you know, planning who confirmed this is okay. But I I've just gone and copied and pasted the answers you gave in the workbook. So for our reference here, and what I can then do is kind of synthesize and try to move past past what you've already said as as quickly as possible. So what seems to be the case is that from at least a couple councillors, you know, no, that wasn't a goal to help those types of homeowners. And councillor Croll, there seems to be a bit of alignment there as well. But I'd like to kick it kind of back to council now, you know, particularly councillor Croll and Mayor Beamish to, you know, to answer this question. And what I will say, like, these are intended to be a little bit, you know, yes, no. I know that reality is a little bit more complicated, but you know, to the extent that we can provide a little bit more yes, no, that helps us land a little bit more firmly on these trade off spectrums. And so, you know, feel free to be complex in your answer, but kind of that's what we're trying to poke for here. So back to council, what we're looking for is if there's a kind of consensus answer on this particular question.
My priority, of course, would be is to have long term rentals in the community and to make those long term rentals affordable for people who want to be here, especially workers who can't currently find accommodation. You know, we recently hired a planner, for example, who accommodation is a seashell because there was nothing locally available. Not a long way to go, but still it's a, it would be nice to be local in the community. So but that being said, it may be that some homeowners don't want to have a full time resident guest and maybe are only looking for a seasonal guest and that way that they can use that for short term rental purposes. So my objective is long term rental, but I I understand the the trade off in that that people might want to have in terms of the looking at making some extra money, but not as a full time, on a full time basis. I used to, when we lived in Houston, we ran a bed and breakfast. And I appreciated the, I appreciated when people were there. I appreciated when people weren't there. And there's there's the benefits in both so that it gets to a certain point in time where you just don't want to have people around and and you're comfortable with that. We didn't have the kind of accommodation that would have led it to long term rental.
Any other thoughts? The, what we're, what we're talking about here, you know, is, you know, to that example, we're asking whether it's a goal of council to help, oh, councillor Ladwick, maybe you can just jump in.
I think maybe I'm gonna try to help you out. It looks like the majority say no.
Yeah, okay. Nice. Okay, great. Any objections to that before we move on?
Just maybe, can I?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, councillor.
No problem. Oh, it's just a note because, you know, as I'm going through answering this question, there's so much responsibility when you say no. You know, it's it's almost like, well, obviously we care about supporting people to to maintain their homes. But I think the way I interpret this is, okay, there's a bigger priority here, right? So it's just to clarify, it's not that, at least I particular, it's not that I don't want to support. Obviously, you want to support people to retain their homes, but it's just prioritize it. We, you know, there's a huge housing crisis that we experiencing. We are seeing every day the consequences. So it's just like, because it seems a little harsh.
Yeah, no, I get that. That's actually a really good distinction. So I can be clear too about the use of the word goal. Like obviously, as representatives of community, you have empathy for all of the range of circumstances, right? And you are concerned about all of the range of circumstances. But when it comes to specifically designing a regulatory program for short term rentals, you need like a shortlist of specific goals. And that's that's the kind of goal we're referring to here. Okay, so note taker, then, we can, we can record a consensus answer of no, that isn't a explicit goal for the structure rental regulations?
You could rephrase that question too, Eric, in terms of is is council see that is is long term rental more important than short term rental? And and I would say, yes, it is more important than short term rental. That would be my answer to that question.
And in fact, that's that's actually the last question in this section. So maybe a bit repetitive on our part, but yeah, good point.
Yeah, thank you.
So now we want to hone in on a scenario, you know, for owners who could not otherwise rent out the unit long term. You know, for owners who could not otherwise rent out the unit long-term. Um, so long-term rental isn't actually an option for them, for example, because it's their principal dwelling unit, you know, as we defined in that presentation, okay? So like, they live there, they can't rent it out long-term, um, you know, or perhaps it's their cottage and long-term rental just isn't feasible. Uh, for any number of reasons. And so the question for council here is. Is it a goal of council to help homeowners short-term rent their principal dwelling unit? Um, you know, for example, in order to help with affordability. So principal dwelling units, so we're not talking as, as we're using it, so not secondary suites underneath. Um, or any accessory dwellings attached, but like the suite of rooms that you live in.
You don't have me on this list, now we say, no, it's not, uh, because again, that's, that's basically. Uh, renting out the house, the, the principal dwelling unit being the house, and so leaving a, leaving a house otherwise vacant. Uh, or for short-term rental only. My biggest concern is, I go back to our, our, um. Uh, our own strategic plan, and we wanna value the new character of the towns and neighborhoods. Promote a sense of community and foster di- diverse economy. We don't have community, we have short-term rentals up and down the block. Uh, you don't know your neighbor, uh, and your neighbor doesn't know you, and the whole definition of neighbors is there people you. Know each other and who look for each other and will look out for each other in their absence as well, and you don't have that when you've got. A plethora of short-term rentals in a neighborhood. So simply, I'm with councillor Crowe, no.
Uh, quick logistics question, Mayor Beamish, you know, if I'm seeing a hand up, would you like me to?
Please save, yeah.
Okay, sorry, uh, councillor Ludwig.
Um, I, I just think it's really important that everyone has a clear understanding of what the question is, so that the answer is not misinterpreted. So when I read this question, and when I filled out the survey, my definition of what a. Principal dwelling was, was different than now what you're describing.
Yeah.
So now it's all my answers are, might not be relevant, I'm not sure. But to me, when I filled out this survey, I was thinking of the principal dwelling as being what you refer to as same lot S T R. So in my mind, I think, so I think of it as an Airbnb, uh, sorry, I think of it as a, as a B and B. And that I think we, from my perspective, should support people from having uh mortgage helpers in their basement or their secondary suite. If they choose to, to help them pay their mortgage, but they need to live there as their principal residence, so that they can take all responsibility. For whatever activities take place in that business. So when my answer was yes, I think S C Rs might create home-based businesses and provide income for more as mortgage helpers. That's what I was thinking when I said that, so.
That's a great distinction, and how about we just use those terms then here to help us talk about this more specifically? So we've got principal dwelling unit, short-term rental, let's just for, as defined by us for now. Um, which is just the suite of rooms, and then how about we use that same lot short-term rental to refer to. Um, the short-term rental of any unit on a lot owned by somebody who lives there. Um, now, uh, and so let's go with the first one for a second, and then I'll return to the same lot short-term rental. So is it a goal, um, it, it's not a problem councillor Ludwig, by the way, I knew that was kind of. Uh, an issue with giving the workbook in advance of the presentation, and so, um, nonetheless, momentum was gained from that exercise, so thank you. So is it a goal of council to help homeowners short-term rent their, just their principal dwelling unit, so the suite of rooms they live in? Um, would anybody kind of like to clarify their, or modify their thinking based on that?
Erica, we're talking then about the, they are, they are still living in the unit.
Yes, and so they're, they're there, the, the hiccup is that this can then include whether they're. They're physically present in their unit, which is their principal dwelling unit, or maybe they're on vacation, so they go to the east coast. It's still their principal dwelling unit, but now somebody is living in it, uh, unhosted, to use your terminology.
Okay, but. Yeah, I, okay. See, I don't have a problem with somebody going on a holiday and renting another place, they're coming back to it. And it, that either is a rental or it could even be a house exchange, uh, which happens very frequently. Now, I don't have a problem with people doing that, uh, as long as they come back and it is still their pres- principal residence. And they're not, you know, ninety percent of the year away and and leaving it as a short-term rental. So if they're, if they're just on a holiday, defined as a holiday as opposed to six months in Arizona. That, that, which is a totally different uh type of principle.
Okay, I can, and you can get that fine-grained about it, um. Um, so, but any other thoughts on that first, I guess councillor Crowe and Ludwig, did you have your hand up as well?
Um, thank you. Um, something that's interesting in this is, you know, answering these questions, um. We were hypothetically envisioning what the ratio is between people who are renting a portion of their principal dwelling. Versus people that are, have a house that if it's not rented through short-term rental, it's empty. It's not their principal resident, and from just the one platform you indicated of ninety-two units. Eighty percent of them are entire houses.
Entire homes, and so, uh, an entire home uh term captures. Secondary suites or accessory dwellings on the same lot, um, as well, and so a suite of rooms that someone could live in as their home.
Yeah, so the example you gave with the house that was the two-story house and you had the two floor plans, that you're. So the, the principal owner of that property, the entire lot. Is renting out what ostensibly could be considered a suite.
Yes, and if it's their top, if it's the top floor where they live, that in this classification scheme would be their principal dwelling unit. And below, um, would not be the principal dwelling unit, and so, um, in this uh question, what, what we're trying to get at is. Is a goal of your regulations to help that, help a homeowner get more revenue out of their principal dwelling unit? So in this case, just that top floor.
Yeah, so it, 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 it's the semantics of, you know. Yes, it's their principal dwelling unit, but they're not renting out the whole thing, they're just renting out a component of it. Which is a self-contained suite with a separate entrance. And that's where, you know, it gets interesting, I personally have no issue in a situation where. The, the resident is, is, is pres- the owner is present renting out that, that suite. Um, so it gets a little, it, it was difficult, uh, to a certain extent, answering. Some of these questions because you didn't know exactly. The terms of reference of what was a standalone unit, the whole thing being rented. Like, I know there's areas in town, there, there's triplexes, and the entire triplex is being rented out. For a term rental, and the owner isn't resident, so, you know, you get into some interesting sort of. Middle messiness, to use your term.
It's true, um, and it's easy, it's, um, you can really get caught up in these terms, so I apologize for that. Um, councillor Ludwig? Who is next, I believe?
Just really quickly, so I stand by my answer, um, I don't know that I would make, call it a goal, but I certainly have no issues with it, and. Um. And I, I wouldn't wanna see us put in any regulations that would hinder it per se. I think people should be able to rent out their home if they want to, if it's their principal resident, for a little income added, a little added income. If it's their principal resident.
Great, councillor Deandrea.
I think I'm using, misinterpret this, uh, the way I read principal, that they were. Renting the whole suite, living a- and renting as an S T R, so I interpret as their principal. The entire suite and unhosed it, uh, so in this regard, I said, I, that's why I said, well, perhaps in some. Areas that we define, like I was asking before, like maybe mixed, uh, use areas or some commercial areas if. Uh, but, yeah, so I think now that I understand, and. So what I understand with this question is, it's their principal residence, and they would be renting just a portion of the rent. Of, of their residence, and it will be hosted. And another alternative, they might go away for two months or even six months, and they might do, uh. Uh, just with one person, for example, right, three months, one, one person in the unit, and that's okay too. So I'm okay with that, so this is because I interpret that they were doing the entire residence, so.
Okay, got it.
And, and one more thing, I mentioned about the need to harmonize. Uh, the bylaw, because that's what we have been talking about, regional government, but I think upon your, uh, your presentation. I'm not sure, because there's so many situations, and you made the comment, right, that it. Maybe it's not needed, so I'm not sure as well if. If we need to harmonize anymore, perhaps we want in certain area, I'm not sure how this will work, but that's another issue for now.
Okay, got it. I'm gonna take a stab at synthesis, and you can kind of correct me if I'm wrong, um, so it sounds like. While it may not be a, a, a strong goal of council to help homeowners earn added revenue. From their principal dwelling unit, so the suite of rooms that they live in, um, you don't wanna necessarily put any, in place any barriers to that. That's kind of just paraphrasing councillor Ludwig, but we'll, we'll put yours forward.
I'm good with that understanding, again, I, I interpreted this to be that the, the principal residence was gonna be turned into a, a short-term rental. Uh, in total, but if, if it is only, if it's homeowner occupied, and, and they're present for that purpose. Uh, then I'm okay with it, there's, there's sharing space as opposed to walking away from space.
Uh, director of planning.
Thank you, sorry, I just wanted to throw out an, a concept, just to make sure everyone's on the same page here. Um, so if you had a single family, uh, a single family dwelling on your home without a secondary suite. So it's just a single home on your property, it's your, and you live there, it's your principal residence. Now, allowing short-term rentals in your principal residence would mean you could leave your home, you could go on vacation. Say I go to Bali for three, three weeks, um, and I could short-term rental my home. Is that something that council is supportive of, or would you say no, because there is no operator on site?
Um, I guess councillor Ludwig and then councillor Crowe.
Okay, so we had another question in the survey that asked exactly that, and I do answer it differently, because. Um. That's, you're like, you're being clear that the person's not there, so it's a different, so I, so I'm glad you clarified. Um, again, uh, my, I'm with mayor Beamish, and that if somebody wants to go away on a vacation and they want to do a house exchange or. Or rent out, or rent out their suite while, or their home while they're away, I'm okay on, I'm okay with that, but I do think we need to have some limits. Because I see that as being a big opportunity for loopholes and, and misuse of our, of our, our, um, bylaw. Um, so, you know, later on, I don't know if we're gonna go over that, that question, but I make a statement like. You know, someone should be able to apply for a very reasonable amount, like, and just a fifty-dollar application fee, saying, I'm going away for thirty, up to thirty days. And I'm renting it out, and. And, you know, be allowed to do it once a year kind of thing, but there has to be some kind of. Uh, bounds on that, because otherwise people just say, always say, oh, I was just away.
Yeah, yeah, well, it also becomes an insurance issue, by the way. Walk away from your house and turn it over to other people.
Um, and I can point out that Squamish, oh, councillor Crowe, um, Squamish does do something like this, where they, they're raising license fees. For that exact type of activity, the more you, the more days you do it per year. Um, and so they're setting kind of intensity thresholds to fine-tune the regulation of this, this very particular type of situation, so that is possible.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Um, sorry, councillor Crowe, I guess, um, uh, mayor Beamish, you can jump in if I'm doing a poor job of this, but councillor. Uh, councillor Deandrea.
Thank you, Eric, um, sort of further to councillor Ludwig's comment about. You know, if someone's going away for, you know, a, a six-week holiday and they want to sort of rent out their home. You know, there is a whole potential, is this class, is, is that in fact, if it's only a one-off, once every two or three years. Um, you know, does that constitute an S T R? And, you know, it's a whole loophole thing, if someone's doing it on a regular basis, and they're oper- they're ostensibly operating a, a. S T R, how do you capture that with a business license, um? You know, it's, and then if, if they're doing it without a license, then it becomes very difficult for bylaw enforcement, so. I, I think, um, there needs to be some parameters set out as to what. You know, the period of time that, um, comes into play.
You know, he. Insurance companies actually require people to have their houses looked at during that period of time, a lot of people actually go away and have friends or family stay there. Uh, we don't police that, uh, we're not gonna know, for example, whether it's a friend or a family situation. Coming and stayed at my house, well, well, I'm gonna wait for three weeks because they're gonna water the plants, look after the dog. And, um, and there's no money exchanges hands, uh, and the insurance company wants me to do that. Uh, so I don't know how we capture that.
Uh, councillor Crowe, and then I can respond to that.
Um, to mayor Beamish's comment, a lot of people who have someone come in and look after their house, so they're. Because most insurance companies now are required that your home be tended to daily, it used to be weekly, but now it's daily. So it actually, people quite often pay someone to come in and look after their house. Water the plants, feed the dog, put the garbage out, you know, so on and so forth, um, there's actually people who make. Um, supplemental income doing that. Um, so it's not like the, the homeowner is, you know, renting out the property to someone they don't know, obviously, in this situation. They're doing it to someone who they know, they trust, or it's someone that's been highly recommended by. Having a good business practice, um, so it's actually, you know, creates a. There are some people that can actually exist going from home to home, um. They don't have a permanent residence of their own, they're actually always on the move, looking after other people's homes, so. You know, that's a bit of a dicey one, if, you know, if, if you're going away for six months or three months or whatever. And renting your place out, then it's a business, you're making money from it. But, um, your situation where you're paying someone to come in and look after your property is totally different.
Yeah, and to a neighbor, that can look like a short-term rental, um, not knowing what's going on.
Um, I, I suspect, oh, sorry, go ahead, councillor Crowe.
Wouldn't you tell your neighbors, I've got someone looking after the house for me while they're away?
Yeah.
Their name is so and so.
It happens, yeah, depends, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd be calling the police if I saw a stranger walking into my neighbor's house.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, the insurance question is a good one, I suspect staff will have kind of specific, uh, you know, operational recommendations closer to the finalization of the bylaws around that. The platforms themselves do have insurance, and when it comes to the neighborhood accountability piece, that's actually a good place to talk about this a little bit more. But if I could try to synthesize where I think we landed here, you landed here, is that. Uh, to the director of planning's question about the specific scenario, you're okay with that happening, but within kind of reasonable limits. Um, so for example, number of nights per year or number of months per year. Um, which you can have a fine-tuned conversation about exactly what that limit is, but we won't do that now, it's just kind of within reasonable limits. Is that fair, councillor Deandrea?
Okay, it's a, it's a kind of clarification, uh, many people here, they go, uh, for three months or even six months. Away, so if I go away for three months and I put a single person in my house, sorry, I'm not saying one person only, but. For this, this entire period will be just whether a couple or one person, or, or even maybe a family. Would, and it's three months or two months, would it be considered short-term rental in this regard? And, uh, and, and do I need someone to come every day to check the house? I'm a little bit confused with the, the insurance requirement, how.
Good question, and I can defer to the director of planning as well, but typically, short-term rental only refers to, tends to refer to thirty days or less, although each local government can kind of define.
Yeah.
The time limit there. Oh, nothing else, I understand, okay, so, so is this kind of a fair synthesis? Um, principal dwelling, short-term rental is acceptable, but within reasonable limits? And then said limits can be proposed and discussed later? Perfect, yeah. So, um, FYI, the first section is the hardest, and there's the most questions, and so. Um, it it's good that we're spending some time on it, um, and I will do my best to keep us on track, we will, we will wrap up. Um, before you have to get going to your next meeting. So the next question, then I think I know the answer, especially since there seems to be alignment, oh, there's definitely alignment. Is whether it is a goal of council to help cottagers afford to keep their cottage via these short term rental regulations. Um, and it looks like we have three noes, um, so far from the workbooks, but now is a chance to. You kind of change your thinking or challenge that, um, you know, particularly Mayor Beamish, if you if you'd like to chime in differently on this.
Yeah, no, my my response is no as well. We used to be a cottage country, we're no longer cottage country, we're. Municipality, uh, and we need the accommodation, so my objective, I mean, yeah, no, I mean. The first call we got on COVID, council, remember the first complaint we had on COVID was a was a house. Uh, that was rented out to people who came over from the lower mainland and were hanging in the house for. A week and the when it became an issue, I got a call from the owner, who was a doctor in Arizona and saying that that's his. That's his retirement plan to rent out the house and to uh to make money on it. And I says, it's not our plan, you know, it's a, how does that work? And uh, so that, now granted, this wasn't a cottage, uh, but it's the same principle. That we just want people here who are part of the community and building community. That being said, I know I know people who have cottages, they don't rent them out, they just keep them as their own personal use. And they come over uh for friends and family, that's all it's for, yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing, you know, no, you know, empathetic to all the range of circumstances, but as far as a goal, no for these regulations. Anybody want to correct me if I'm wrong, otherwise I'll move on.
Sounds good.
Okay. So now we're getting uh closer to the end of this section and. We're talking about residents versus non-residents. Which your currently contemplated criteria distinguishes between, and the question is. Whether it is a goal of council to concentrate, again, we're still under the goal of helping. Uh, responding to the needs of homeowners for added revenue, so we're still under that, and so within that goal. Um, is it a goal of council to concentrate that added revenue, you know, in the in the hands of local residents? Um, it's not currently made explicit in your list of goals, but you, in your deliberations, you bring this up quite a bit. And if so, uh, what do you particularly mean by uh residents? Um, and I know Counselor Deandrade have a question for staff there as well. Um. I'm gonna throw it over to all of you to discuss and then Counselor Deandrade, perhaps you could pose that question to the director of planning if if you like.
Yes, I would like, because when I was trying to respond, I was like, okay, how do we prove? Right, and if this would have some bearing on the S T R, so. I I thought, I know we we also had this discussion in council, but I don't remember if it's. If this is a easy, easy way to do it, so.
I can, I can address Counselor Deandrade's question, so what we had proposed in our, in the draft bylaws. Uh, was with your application, you would have to provide um. A letter from B C Hydro or Fortis B C or some of one of your utilities with your address on it, so it would have to have your name and your address on it. And that was the approach we were taking, and we had sort of adopted that from the city of Vancouver and other municipalities that. Identify their principal residences based on their, where their utilities are being charged. Or your driver's license, so it's two pieces of I D, one had to be a picture I D.
Counselor Crowe?
Um, further to the director of planning's comment, I thought we had talked about using where you claim your homeowner grant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that that would work as well.
Because any anyone can have a hydro bill mailed to. You know, I've got friends who live in Ireland, I get their mail here in Gibson, so technically to that. Um, their principal residence is here in Gibson's.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be two pieces of I D that show your address on it and your name.
The where you claim your homeowner grant would indicate what your principal residence is, would it not?
Yes, yeah, it would, and that would be accepted.
Okay, we we may have an F O I issue around that particular one, but the uh, the question I have on this is, uh. Are we talking about? The goal account to concentrate financial benefits operating S T Rs in the hands of local residents? In their principal residence, or are we talking about, hey, I'm, I own three homes in town and I have three of them, two of them. Out as short term rentals and I live in the third one.
Sure.
But I'm a resident.
So where this question came from was in your list of criteria that the P D C committee put forward for unhosted. Um, yeah, short term rentals, um, there is the idea to limit that. To the operation of unhosted short term rentals to local residents, and so we were wondering. Is this an explicit goal of council underneath this goal of homeowner, added homeowner revenue? Or what you, is what you really mean, you know, um, added homeowner revenue just for local residents, so kind of like an explicit criteria. Uh, underneath this goal, and you can prove that in any number of ways or define it in any number of ways, but like, is this an explicit goal?
Yeah. Counselor, sorry, Ladwick.
Well, once again, I I just keep saying it, I I'm, I support, I guess we're calling it now principal dwelling. Owner occupied S T Rs, and so that would mean that it would be proved through their homeowner grant, through their address, their their I D. And they could only have one of those properties anyways, and so all of this kind of goes away.
Got it. Yeah. Okay, um. Any other thoughts on this one, and then I'm gonna move us on?
Well, it could be though, it could be a cottage on a property owned. By somebody, so it would be on, it would not be within the principal residence, but it could be a cottage on the on the property, yeah.
Yes, and so this actually, you know what I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna kind of move us on to the next one, because I think it might help us get a bit more more clarity. And it's, um, I'm gonna skip these ones because they're a bit confusing, um, in the interest of time, they are not the most important. Uh, this one is, and so it's asking you to confirm. Who the underneath that, I or um wish to respond to the desire for added homeowner revenue. Who is the primary target, because there's all sorts of different types of homeowners, and so we've talked about. Homeowners who could otherwise rent out that unit long term. We've talked about homeowners who are just looking to share their home, their suite of rooms, like their principal dwelling unit. We've talked about um targeting local residents for all of this, when in terms of added revenue. And so this is an opportunity to try to synthesize like and specify who the primary target is, like who you primarily trying to help earn added revenue. Um, with respect to this goal uh for the regulations, it sounds like, um. Uh, and there's a little bit of tension, for example, on the same lot, so I'm gonna pull that back now, so the same lot short term rental, because if we go back up. Here. Where's the first question? Who could otherwise rent out the unit long term, and so we had some consensus here that, no, we're actually not, uh, you're you're not. Your goal is not to help people earn added revenue from, for example, secondary suites or accessory dwellings, even if on the same lot. And yet, for example, Counselor Ladwick, you were open to that, you know, when responding to a question framed otherwise. And so if we then kind of go down to this final question. You know, do, is that scenario where a homeowner has a a livable secondary suite or accessory dwelling? You know, are we targeting them for this type of added revenue? Um, or is it someone else? Uh, Counselor Ladwick?
I have a feeling that we're gonna end up answering the, we're gonna be answering the same questions in different ways, depending on how the questions are asked and our understanding of what's being asked. So just to be clear, I have no problem with S T Rs on same lot S T Rs in any. Dwelling type, whether it's whether it's a little cottage in the backyard, a basement suite down below, a side, doesn't matter to me, as long as it. The owner of that building, of that lot. Considers that their primary residence and is there to deal with ever, whatever issues may come of that business. So take that for whatever question you want.
Yeah, well, it's a good point, right?
Yeah, so same lot S T R is good, any housing type I'm fine with, if it's on the same lot, as long as the principal. As long as the the dwelling is a principal resident and the owner. Uh, is occupying the building or living there, with the exception of those vacation things, which is just a little sidebar.
Okay, got it, um, well, maybe I'll have you perhaps repeat another answer you've already given, which is what we're trying to get here. We're trying to prioritize specific goals, right? Um, and so we've already confirmed the general um prioritization that protecting long term housing. And protecting, you know, or neighborhood scale for businesses are the top two goals. Those are intention with being open to same lot S T R or helping homeowners earn added revenue in that situation. Um, and so, uh. To to the extent that you want to help homeowners earn added revenue. Um, or you just, you're not opposed to it, that's one way of putting it, but you, would you like this goal to target a specific situation? Or are you more saying that you're just kind of open to a range of scenarios?
And I don't understand the question, but.
Yeah, um, okay, well, probably just shooting myself in the foot, rather than, uh. Um, why don't we, Counselor Deandrade, and then I can move us on?
Yeah, I think I have difficulty interpreting this question too, and I think was the D M that was tired and I. Uh, okay, I just wanna paraphrase in a different way what Counselor Ladwick said to see if I understand. So if I have a principal residence and I and I have a cottage and a and a another type of tiny home. So I have three units in a property. So what we are talking here is the unit I leave, I can do S T R. The other two, no, is that what we are talking about? No, okay, so. So that, okay, so how many units, is it, I remember the legislation, if I'm correct, you allow one unit. If you have three units, uh, the principal and two other, you can do one full time S T R. And then you still can do your own residence? Is that what we were contemplating?
We were contemplating um allowing one short term rental per property. Only if it was hosted, so. Um, a little bit of a different scenario to what you were proposing.
Um, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move us on, because I don't think I'm helping get you any additional clarity here. Um, but you know, I've heard, you know, full time residents are focused, I'm under here, um, and. And with as far as principal dwelling units, open within reasonable limits. Um, and potentially some differences of opinion on the extent of openness to same lot S T R, you know, but that can be discussed a little bit more um later. Uh, okay, so this takes us to the final question in this section, which is the longest. Um, and seeks to confirm a general lean towards one side of these trade off spectrums or another. And I'm just gonna take a step, because what I'm hearing so far, they bundle together, remember, so that on the left. You're generally encouraged encouraging revenue from long term rental and you're supporting future owners. On the right, you're generally encouraging more revenue from short term rental, um, and supporting current owners. Take your point, Counselor Ladwick, that these trade off spectrums aren't necessarily mutually exclusive, you can find situations where you can kind of get both. But generally, you're you're leaning towards one or the other, um, kind of with regulatory programs, so. What I'm hearing from the answers above, uh. Are that you are generally with this goal, seeking to encourage revenue from long term rental. Um, if on one side of the spectrum and supporting future owners, not like all the way. Uh, but if you had to lean one way or the other in the spectrum, it'd be a little bit more left than right, is that correct? Uh, Director of Planning, did you want to clarify the question at all? And left is consistent with the prioritization we did at the very beginning.
I can jump in here, this is Shannon, I've been, I'm listening the entire uh time along, and maybe I can provide a little bit of clarity. I think what I'm hearing is that um council is comfortable with. Um, the same lot S T R as long as there's somebody on. That property who can provide some level of responsibility and accountability. And I think what Eric was suggesting around the tension point is that um those are potentially. Two or three separate principal dwelling units, and in the presentation, those could be potential homes for someone. And so what I'm hearing for Counselor Ladwick is um the mortgage helper or the basement seat or the secondary suite. If it is unoccupied, but using that example, the the owner is on the top floor, that you're comfortable. Short term renting out that basement suite or that cottage, and I think Eric is saying that may come in conflict and conflict and tension with your goal. Around supporting uh long term rental and housing, because that secondary suite. Could potentially be a home for someone else, I think that is the system of everyone coming together. Is that right?
Yeah, good summary.
Yeah. Uh, Counselor Ladwick.
Counselor Ladwick.
That was a very good summary, thank you, Shannon. Um, so then to clarify my, clarify my answer, I still will stick with what I've provided, because. I don't personally believe that. Everyone that has a rental suite in their basement necessarily wants to have somebody living in their basement full time, I would hope they would. And I would like to see us have a conversation about incentives for people to encourage long term rentals, I think that's a whole nother conversation we should be having. Um, we should be reducing their garbage and their water utility fees, like I think there's a whole bunch of things we could do to encourage long term rental. But some people just don't want to have somebody living in their basement full time, are they okay for a couple of months of the year renting out short term? Yes, it helps with their mortgage and they're okay with that, and so I, this is where I feel homeowners should have some flexibility. Um, but buying secondary properties and building up a business where they own multiple properties and S T Ring them, that's what I think we should have avoided as a community.
Yeah. Yeah, I personally think if we look at our housing stock in town, I think a hundred percent of our housing stock should be. Owner occupied or long term rental for the principal dwelling. If there's opportunity within that context to have a short term rental, I'm comfortable with that. As long as it is long term rented or owner occupied. So it it is a home to somebody, a hundred percent of our homes should be homes to somebody. If at the same time they are able to generate additional revenue by having an additional home for somebody else or a short term rental. Uh, that's fine, but a hundred percent of our properties with dwelling units on them should be. Long term rental or owner occupied.
At least one of the units on that lot, you're meaning Mayor Beamish.
Yes, and a a long term renter, my view, could also operate a short term rental if they had permission from the owner.
Uh, Counselor Ladwick and Counselor Deandrade?
Totally agree with everything Mayor Beamish just said, until it gets to the commercial zone, which is another conversation.
That's the commercial zone, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay, uh, just a clarification again, in the past, we have said. That if I have three uh different types of housing in one property. We could uh do one full time uh S T R and the others though, so what Mayor Beamish is proposing, it's slightly different, right? So always owner occupy any unit and you are allowed to do S T R. It on 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 as long as.
It it could be a long term renter, could be also doing an S T R.
Exactly, exactly, but they have to be, so if I have three uh different types of of product, uh, properties in. Sorry, two times, three different types of independent units, they all have to be owner occupied. Uh, owner occupy or I mean, one owner occupy and the other two, there will be long-term rental. But these people can also do STRs in their own units. Is it what?
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, if you've got two more than one dwelling, you more than one dwelling unit potential on your property. You still have, one of those has to be owner occupied or long-term rental. And how you use the other two, unless we have a covenant, unless we've, it's been put in place there. With a covenant that it remain is affordable housing, for example, that that uh. Uh, you know, the um in that. Principle, so but generally speaking. Hundred percent of our residential properties, subdivided residential properties should have a owner occupied or a long-term renter on them. How other people are on the property is going to be up to that person.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom us out then. So we've been talking about the same lot short-term rental. Concept, and that was a great summary, Shannon, and the flag there is. If you're open to same lot short-term rental, that's a potentially large number of occupiable long-term residences. Um, throughout the community. And so if you stick with the prioritization of housing or long-term rental in your top two goals. That's, that could become challenging then, um, so long as you remain open to to same lot short-term rentals. Which can then take us to maybe a finer-grain discussion, and I actually. I'm gonna propose, we, I'm gonna skip goal number two, I'm gonna come back to it, but this is a nice segue to goal number three. Which is keeping the scale of businesses appropriate to residential neighborhoods, which is the area we can now start talking about kind of like density limits. Where you can try to hold those two at the same time, but look, but get a little bit more fine-grained about it. Um, so the task here is to clarify whether there's a desire. For example, if you want to maintain openness to same lot short-term rental. Is there a desire to manage short-term rental density at the neighborhood and community level? Currently, you're only proposing to do it at the lot level. Um, but with that approach, you could still get quite a few, um, like a large number of short-term rentals in the community, which will take away a lot of housing. Um, and so. Uh, we're going to dive into this then. Via the following question. Does underneath this goal, which as stated, is keep the scale of businesses appropriate to residential neighborhoods. Do you view appropriate scale to include considerations of short-term rental density at the, at the street and neighborhood and community level? So broader than currently contemplated. And it seems like. A couple of least yes over to you to discuss. I'll give a couple of examples. Squamish um has set a thirty unit cap across the entire community. So they've set a community level density cap. Nelson B C sets neighborhood or street level density caps. Um, currently Gibson's is proposing just a lot level density cap.
Well, Eric, when you say a thirty. Level cap in Squamish, does that mean only thirty short-term rentals in the community?
Uh, additional clarification, thirty non-principal dwelling unit short-term rentals. They're open to all principal dwelling unit short-term rentals and they have this escalating business license fee. Um, but as far as non-principal dwelling unit short-term rentals, whether on the same lot or not. Um, they're capping that at thirty across the whole community for a test period of two years.
Okay.
So just to piggyback, this is Shannon here again on what Eric's saying and using the same example of that house we saw for sale. So in that example, if the um homeowner lived on the top floor, but the basement was vacant. In the Squamish example, only thirty of those would be allowed. Does that make sense? And is that correct, Eric?
Thirty of those, or it could be a laneway house, or, you know, a complete separate lot owned by the same person. Anything that isn't a principal dwelling unit, yes. Counselor Kroll, um, so the question is, when you're thinking about appropriate scale, do you want to be thinking. Beyond the lot level and that kind of the street neighborhood or community level? Uh, Counsel Kroll and then Counsel Ladwick.
Um, this was more a question, um, in the Squamish example, um. How do they do the business license? Is it first come, first served for the thirty or?
They are granting those through temporary use permits, um, and so you have to apply. I'm not intimately familiar with all of the criteria they're using to assess who gets the permit or not, whether it's first come, first served or um some other mix of criteria. I think that's up, up to you to decide, uh, Counsel Ladwick.
Okay, and just for clarity on the Squamish example, so you're saying that there's only thirty that are a separate unit. So that means that all the other air, all the other Airbnbs are like an attached, just what can it be a bedroom with a washroom? To somebody's main dwelling?
Or the whole dwelling while you're away in vacation and it's your principal dwelling unit. So the example the Director of Planning was bringing up. So that is unlimited, although you pay different license fees depending on how much you do it per year. Um, but if you're short-term renting a dwelling unit that isn't your principal dwelling unit. Basement suite, secondary house, laneway cottage, whole other property, there's only thirty of those allowed across the entire community.
Well, you know, I could agree to that. I mean, I remember years ago when basement suites were brought in to solve the housing problem. And then because then the lot became short-term rentals and we exacerbated the housing problem. So I could certainly agree to put in some kind of a cap on the number of those. We call standalone units uh on a property that are, that are in addition to the primary um principal resident.
Counsel Ladwick.
Yeah, I honestly just assumed that. Not that many people would want to live above their STR or next to their STR, and so it would just sort of self-regulate. Um, but maybe, but I would be open to thinking about limits. I I honestly haven't given it a lot of thought, though. So I'm not sure what the right number would be.
Uh, but um regardless of the exact number. Would you like to consider that community level or neighborhood level density as part of your STR regulations, like Squamish does, for example? It's a way to be open, but to to manage kind of cumulative impacts. Uh, Counsel Deandrade.
Uh, thank you. I think we have to. It's just interest because Squamish has a population of twenty thousand people, so we are four times less. So if we use some proportional ratio, it's gonna be very low the number. Uh, and I'm just wondering how we're gonna do this uh segregation. But I agree that we have to have a level because I agree with Mayor Beemish, the purpose of allowing uh density was to. Uh, uh, provide long-term uh residents and this goal basically. I, it will be interesting, yeah, to know how many more units we would have if we were not allowed. So I'm, 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 I'm for some sort of restriction for sure. I'm, I'm just not sure if the same as Squamish will be feasible here. But I'm open to uh any discussion.
Counsel Ladwick.
Um, so I'm open to that discussion too. I think it is a whole nother discussion that needs to sort of be had because it wasn't something that we were really contemplating. But I think when we do have that discussion. Um, we also need to look at what other tourism accommodations are offered in our community because Squamish is gonna have. Hotels and and other things to serve the tourism community that we right now don't have. It's a big gap in our community. So I just think we need to really balance all of that when, when we come up with this magic number.
Okay, I think I might synthesize this by saying you're open to this uh type of um regulation. Uh, managing density at the neighborhood or community level, and then you can enter that fine-grained discussion later on. And I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm gonna jump us around a little bit just to follow the flow. So I'm gonna now take us to goal two, which is directly to your point. Oh, sorry, Counsel Deandrade.
Just, just a clarification, when you set community level, you're also uh contemplating. Na- uh, street level, right? The, the example you gave uh from Nelson, right? Or whatever, or smaller scale, or are you eliminating when you say community is just the total or?
Uh, sorry, no, I didn't mean to be um eliminated, I meant inclusive, so. Um, density considerations beyond what you're currently thinking, which is just the lot level.
I think the challenge of doing at the community, at the, at the street level would be great, whereas a community level, putting a cap on it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Enforcement consideration, yes. Um, okay, let's go, go up here. So to your point, Counselor Ladwick, you know, different communities will have different contexts and different abilities to provide kind of tourist accommodation. So this, you know, this goal is you want to provide tourists with a accommodation options um for staying and visiting Gibson's. And. This question I I put, you know, we put in this workbook was a hypothetical one, you know. I, you know, for example, in Victoria, completely different community, completely different context, quite a bit bigger. But you know, a lot of traditional accommodation providers are now starting to provide kind of like dwelling-type units. You know, that allow pets with a kitchen and like bathroom and like larger to meet this modern demand for more amenity-rich accommodation. And uh, the trade-off here is whether you want to try to encourage that modernization of this more traditional accommodation type. Or whether you want to lean on residential zones or portions thereof to provide this accommodation. Um, and it's a lean, this is a lean question. Obviously, you're gonna be fine tuning here. But if you, you know, if it was possible, would you prefer to lean on kind of commercially provided guest accommodation to meet that need? Um, was the question. And. Counselor Ladwick, you were kind of bringing up um kind of that nuance about, you know, the mixed-use zones. Uh, but maybe I'll just open it up for kind of any fresh thinking there. If you had to choose, if you had to lean, you know, which way would you lean? Counsel Ladwick.
Sorry, guys, if I'm dominating this conversation, tell me to be quiet. Uh, I support um STRs in the commercial zone. Unoccupied STRs in the commercial zone, particularly in the Gibson's Landing area. We only have three properties right now that are zoned for hotel accommodation. And none of those properties are currently being used as or operating as a hotel. So in our commercial, sorry, in our red, in our tourist hub. We have no tourism accommodation and this automatically puts pressure on the residential zone. With that said, I believe that having STRs above the commercial strip in Lower Gibson's. Could create a really eclectic, vibrant accommodation options that would enhance our community, if anything, not detract, not be a negative. It wouldn't create noise complaints in the evenings, and I think it'd be a really vibrant positive to have STRs in the Gibson's Landing area. So I particularly support the beachcomber scenario that they have going on there. I think it's a good example of what we should be not only allowing, but encouraging in the Gibson's Landing uh area. I think it gets a little bit more nuanced in Upper Gibson's and I'm open to this, uh, to discussion about that. Um, but I, I think it's, I think it's a vibrant thing to consider for Gibson's Landing. At a proper scale.
Counsel Deandrade and then Counsel Kroll.
Thank you. I agree uh with what Counselor Ladwick said, obviously with limitations to even what. With, well, obviously in commercial zones, if it's really well-defined, I probably need to look at the map. But not forgetting that Lower Gibson is also, there's a lot of residents there, so I think it's just balancing the trade-off. But, but I agree, uh, commercial areas, I think it, yeah, we discussed this before. And I, and I even uh made a comment here on, in the other, on, on the other uh question. But uh, but just lower Gibson's because it's more uh, you know, tourist uh area. If it's non, if it's just residential, I think this has to have a good conversation with uh. With the, the residents, what they would like. So my counsel, I don't know if you mentioned commercial, what existing right now, commercial. Or because you mentioned Lower Gibson's, right? So I don't know if you're saying generally uh Lower Gibson, because there's a lot of residential areas there, so just so.
Uh, Counsel Kroll and then perhaps Counsel Ladwick, you could respond to that, and then I've got a potential synthesis here from what I'm hearing, but go ahead, Counsel Kroll.
Um, thank you, um. We, we recognize the fact that, you know, there is, and it was mentioned in the report, that. If you, you, if you're encouraging and stimulating short-term rental, there's less incentive to um. For a development of um, of hotels. Or re, um, even refurbishing of existing hotels. So, um, you know, at what point do you say, here's a commercial zone, it, it's zoned for tourist accommodation? And now you're saying, let's fill, infill it with short-term rentals at the cost of ever getting a half-decent hotel. So where, where's the balance point um? There that, you know, I think, you know, in the commercial area, you almost might want to um. Discourage STRs to encourage the development of, of a proper tourist accommodation facility. That encourages employment in the community, that pays proper commercial taxes in the community. Because right now we get, you know, other than property, residential property taxes, we're not getting. A decent revenue stream from short-term rentals.
Counsel Ladwick.
Um, it would be interesting to see some kind of uh. Revenue projections and visitor, visitor ship projections with things like this, like when you look at somewhere like Whistler. Every, every building is a hotel and they, they fill them for, you know, like there, there's lots. There's lots of need for tourism accommodation. Now, I know that's a, a, a different um municipality type. But. Without, with the growth that I'm seeing in Gibson's, and this is all just certain, just my assumption is not based on any facts, but. I think that there's enough interest in Gibson's that a hotel could be supported along with. Uh, short-term rentals above the little shops along uh Gower Point Road and the Gibson's Landing area. I think we could have both and do just fine, but that's completely just based on my observations of visitors to Gibson's and not statistically sound at all. Uh, but I don't think one uh, one eliminates the other. I think we could have both.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna try something and then you can tell me whether it's a fair synthesis or not. So I think what I'm hearing is that generally prefer um to encourage and kind of revitalize commercial. Options such as hotels and motels and, you know, get those um going and provide, you know, new and upgraded units. However, to the extent that that doesn't meet the full need, for example, as perhaps um quantified in a dedicated, you know, tourism assessment that may. Happen at some point in the future, you could target, you know, you know, permissions for these commercial mixed-use zones, you know, to allow in specific areas, you know, to allow. Um, more resi- um, short-term rentals and more residential dwelling units, for example, in Lower Gibson's. Um, and Upper Gibson's might be, like you said, a more nuanced conversation, but like a more targeted allowance. And um, you might be able to do that with something like the Squamish Temporary Use Permit Zone, because you can kind of dial that up and down. Um, you know, every two years, for example, based on kind of evolving context. Uh, is going back, is that synthesis generally correct? General preference for commercial, traditional hotel, but like targeted allowance where needed?
Yeah, I could see a tourism commercial zone, but very specifically defined. Is, uh, you know, down in Lower Gibson's as opposed to being general to the community. And, and I wouldn't want to see, I, I would want to see it defined also probably as. Uh, a, a, uh, residential over commercial. Uh, not displacing a, an existing commercial unit and shutting it down and creating a, a residential unit instead, because then you lose your commercial aspect. So I think it has to be tightly defined and it's, it's actually gonna be relatively few in number. But I don't have a problem because to me, they're not disrupting the neighborhood, they're, they're adding value in fact to a, to a. An area of town that at nighttime gets. Very quiet and uh, suddenly you introduce people walking around. And um, you know, after the restaurants have closed and after everything else has gone home, you still got people, and I think that's a good thing. But narrowly defined is i- i- into the area. And so I could see that being along Marine Darve and Gower Point Road only in those areas.
Okay, is that, is that a fair synthesis, though? Kind of general preference for revitalizing commercial, um, le-zoned, okay, cool. Um, so, yeah, Shannon, you may be already recording that. Oh, look, there you go. So uh, I'm going to try to use the best remaining time, the best I can, so I'm just gonna do a quick scan and I'm to pick uh. What kind of the highest return on investment of your time is. Maybe this can be quick. So a big concern is neighborhood disturbances and the kind of neighborhood accountability. That's a big reason you went with the hosted versus unhosted kind of categorization. Because the physical presence, presence of an operator is like a really good way to introduce accountability. However, there are other ways. You know, for example, if you rent out your single detached home while in Bali, you're not going to be physically present, but you also stated in discussion that you would be open to that within reasonable limits. So the question here is, are you open to other means of ensuring neighborhood accountability of which, you know, I could provide several, but they exist in some scenarios? I feel like I'm going to hazard a guess, yes, maybe I'll put that forward and then you can, you can challenge that or correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, what are the other means? What are you talking about?
Right. So for example, some communities use designated responsible person. And so in the business license application, they designate a responsible person for the property whom a neighbor or the city can contact if there is a disturbance or complaint. That can be a neighbor, a friend, a family member, or even a property management company. Another tool you can use are neighborhood notification guidelines where you are required to notify your neighbors, for example, immediately adjacent neighbors of the use and give a contact number for them to call. Whether you're physically present or not, they can call you or the designated responsible person. A third tool I could quickly mention is what many communities are calling kind of good neighbor guidelines. Not necessarily required, but things that both guests and operators can do and neighbors can do to ensure good relations over time. So those are three. There, there are a couple more, but the question, the basic question is, do we, do you absolutely want the physical presence of an operator? Or are you open to kind of other means if, if when discussed, you know, they're appropriate?
I want the presence of an operator. I mean, I don't mind somebody, say renting their house out for three weeks to a month to the same person consistently, whether on holiday. But if it's a short term rental, I want it owner occupied or, or occupied premises.
I shouldn't have hazard a guess. Okay, councillor Ladwick, over to you.
Just ditto everything Mayor Bemish just said. I just think by it being operated by anybody other than the principal owner, it leaves too many loopholes. So I, I think I just ditto everything Mayor Bemish just said.
Other opinions? Councillor Deandrea.
Yes, the reason I said yes, because I was contemplating other zones, right? That, that might be permitted on STR without the home, the homeowner there, as we discussed. So that's why I said, and I, and I would like to know. And you already mentioned three of them. I was just curious what, what they are. But, but I agree with, you know, if it's just a residential, yeah, then no, a home, someone, whether owner or the renter should be present. But on commercial zones, you have, we will have to find out a way of, right, having this mechanism.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the, the, the difference is in a commercial zone, tourist or commercial zone, you'd have to have a, a contact.
Okay, great. What I'll do now, again, to try to get you the best ROI for this time is to ask about any goals that are missing. For example, councillor Ladwick, homeowner flexibility was like a goal that you brought up and has been brought up through this process and deliberations. Whether or not a homeowner is earning added revenue, there seems to be this desire to at least give them the flexibility to use same lot, like units on the same lot, for example, as a short term rental. Is this something homeowner flexibility that you'd like to surface as an explicit goal for these regulations? Or would you prefer to leave it in the background?
Well, I had it. I guess I had it, I would have placed it as a, as a goal, but now we're talking about limiting the number of, of units within the community that can be rented out. So I I'm not sure now if that fits.
Fair enough. I guess in that case it'd be limited flexibility, but yeah.
Yeah, because I really do think that homeowners should have that flexibility. But at the same time, I wish I just had more information about this particular issue, like how significant it is and how many units are actually being, would be taken out from the long term rental stock if, if we put in those kind of restrictions. I just know that a lot of people said that they had an STR in their backyard or in their basement and they just simply wouldn't rent it out long term because their home just wasn't designed that way. The last house I lived in is the same. I wouldn't have wanted people living in my basement. You could hear every step my kids took running across the floor upstairs. It would not make for a good long term rental. But it for a short term STR would have been fine. And so I, I'm not sure. I guess I'm not answering this very well. Maybe I'm getting tired or hungry, but I do think flexibility for the homeowner does need to be reflected somewhere in the policy.
Got it. Any other thoughts about whether this should be listed as an explicit goal in addition to the other four you already have? I'm going once. Going twice. We only have around 20 minutes left until you need to get, you know, physically go to your next meeting. So what I would suggest now is we now return to the prioritization exercise and see whether we can get any more specific about that. So let's go there. Here was the alignment you signaled through the workbook and again, at the beginning of this meeting with protecting long term rental supply and keeping a scale of businesses appropriate to residential neighborhoods to talk to. And those naturally do go together. So that's good. With the secondary goals being responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to have added revenue and providing tourists with accommodation options for staying and visiting in Gibson's. I don't think I've heard anything that would change that general bundling. I'm going to give you a quick second to challenge that though. Going once, going twice. Okay, perfect. So now, now I want to give you the opportunity to try to get even more specific. And I'm going to do that by asking you, between those top two then, protecting long term rental supply and keeping the scale of businesses appropriate to residential neighborhoods. Could you pick, could you find a consensus on the top one? Currently you're split? Kind of one, one for some, two for some? Could you, through a quick conversation, land on a top one goal? Based on the kind of urgency of it in your community, I suppose.
You, in your introduction, you commented that some communities have much more relaxed short term rental policies just because they have a, a large, because they have capacity. We have limited capacity on long term rental and, and that to me has got to be the priority. We don't have a surplus and so that, that, until we have a surplus in, in rental accommodations for workers, for affordable housing, then I think it has to be, in my view, long term rental supply has to be the priority.
Councillor Deandrea.
I agree with Mayor Bemish and I understand, I mean, and that's why the struggle is because we want to provide flexibility. And, and all the other values are important, goals are important. But since we, we took, we were elected, the major issue we have, it's the housing crisis. Everything revolves around the housing crisis. We don't get people to work here because we don't have, we don't know. You know, restaurants have to close because they don't have place for people to live. So to me, that it has to be the major goal. Right? Right now, perhaps in 10 years, when all these units will be built or in five years, we can change the goal. But to me, this is a number one goal.
Councillor Ladwick.
My preference would have been keeping the scale of business appropriate to the residential neighborhood as the number one goal only because I feel that all the spin off benefits that come from that. It's just a, it's a, it's a broader goal. And then by having that as the broader goal, all these other things are captured, like retaining long term rental supply in Gibson's. Like maintaining neighborhood character, like managing any complaints that may or may not have come from unattended short term rentals. So I just feel like it's a, it's a broader, from a policy piece, a broader kind of overarching goal. And then all these other benefits come out of it. Having said that, obviously, I, I totally understand that the long term rental is absolutely a crisis in our community and that is kind of what we're trying to get to. It's just more of a how you structure your, your priorities. If everybody else wants to go with long term rental supply, that's, I can do that too.
I think in order to be more specific though, I'd like to see that retain a range of long term rental supply because there has to be affordable housing there too, and it has to be seen as being part of that goal.
Councillor Crowell.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, affordable rental supply is, is the awkward thing. Because even if, you know, with our bylaw, that some of these standalone short term rentals go back into the rental pool, they're in all likelihood, because of the location and the upgrades and the renovations that have been done to them, I very much doubt that they would be affordable rentals if they were even to go back into the rental pool. So it's, you know, the long term rental supply is a critical issue in this community. Like, you know, businesses close at four o'clock because they can't stay open because of staffing issues. You know, businesses close for months to stretch because of staffing. So, you know, the, the, I'm quite happy with the long term rental supply, you know, being the number one issue. You know, I think if businesses are thriving, things like that, then the tourism and stuff like that will, will spin off it appropriately.
Okay, well, that's consensus as far as I'm hearing. So good job, everybody. That's like a pretty clear number one goal. So the next question then, is there any of these that would be your least prioritized goal? You're, there's a little bit of a split there now too, between responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to have added revenue and providing, you know, the right number and diversity of tourist accommodation options. And you know, would anybody like to make a case for a goal that should be the, the lowest priority, even though it is a goal of these regulations? And the frame could be, you know, what is the least urgent need in the community? It's one way to think about it.
See, these, these goals don't, are they specific to short term rental? Because, you know, like, like I would probably re-priorize them. I'd keep number one, the way we've got it. But I would then want to go with the response to the needs of homeowners who wish to have added revenue as number two, in my view. Now you're supporting local residents to stay in their homes. And then third, keep the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods, you know, overwhelming. Because there are more than short term rental businesses in homes in our neighborhoods. There are other businesses that are conducted from, from homes and then providing tourist accommodation. So are we talking, is it all short term rental we're talking about in the context here? Or are we talking a broader context of managing the number of businesses in the community on the streets or anything?
I would definitely recommend you think of these just as goals for your short term rental regulations. They can align with broader goals, but it'll help, help it, yeah.
I still do like, and I still would argue to prioritize responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to have avenue revenue as a second priority, just because we're helping them perhaps stay in their homes and, and remain in their homes in that sense.
So I'm just like, that actually now creates a pretty deep tension in the regulations. Because before, there's, in early discussion, council confirmed a bundling of number one and number two of protecting long term rental supply and neighborhood, keeping scale businesses appropriate to residential neighborhoods. Those two go together. They're not internally intentioned. Whereas added homeowner revenue actually is intentioned with protecting long term housing supply. So to the extent that if you, if you'd like coherent, maximum coherence, I would, I would recommend you you try to keep that initial bundling that you decided on and now try to kind of fine tune the ordering. So if protecting long term rental supply is number one, number two, in that earlier confirmed bundle would be keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods. Helping homeowners or to add a revenue now kind of goes in number three or number four, based on kind of that, that initial bundling, if it still holds.
Then I put that number three.
Cool. So that, that was a casual use of that term, sorry. So the, the implication then, the number, the fourth one would be providing tourists with accommodation options as like the fourth or least urgent goal. Anybody care to comment on that to provide an alternative view? Councillor Ladwick.
Sorry, I'm not providing an alternative view. I'm just saying, I just think all four of these goals are important. And as long as they're all reflected in our, in our policy, that's a good thing. So if, and then I agree with this, with the scaling that Mayor Bemish outlined, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so that would give us protecting long term rental supply, number one. Keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods, number two. Number three would be responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to add added revenue. And number four would be providing tourists with accommodation options. That's Mayor Bemish and councillor Ladwick are kind of have that on the table. Any thoughts on that? Councillor Deandrea or Crowell?
I'm, I'm happy with that.
Oh, well then, you know, with 10 minutes to go before we aim to close, that then gives you time. And I suppose I could turn it over to staff to formally, or you Mayor Bemish, to formally move a motion in the staff report that kind of the request was direction in terms of prioritized goals. And so now is the time to formally do that, should you choose. So to confirm what we just, what you just decided.
Go to the director of planning first and ask her where we are then in the process. What is still, has to be done before we bring something back in a bylaw form to council? What is, what is undone, Director of Planning?
Thank you, Mayor. So at this point, once councillor, the committee passes a resolution, this goes to council for adoption on the fifth of October. At that point, I would have to review our bylaw that's drafted, because we do have a bylaw on the table that's had first and second reading. So I would review it and based on this direction, I would make those changes and then bring back a bylaw for consideration. And depending on how much it's changed, we would either, I'd either recommend repealing the bylaw that's on the table and starting fresh with first and second reading. Or if we can just amend it, then we could amend the bylaw and then go to a public hearing. So I'd have to take this and, and work on it, digest it a bit and then, and then bring back a bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. And so at this point, we do have a recommendation. So it would be that council direct staff to regulate short term rentals based on the following prioritized goals. And then we would plunk in, first would be retaining the long term rental supply in Gibson's. Second is keeping the scale of business appropriate to residential neighborhoods. Third, responding to the needs of homeowners who wish to have added revenue or flexibility. And fourth would be providing tourists with accommodation options for staying and visiting Gibson's.
Hey, I'm comfortable with where we got to. Would somebody care to move that as a resolution? Councillor Crowell, second by councillor Ladwick. Any further discussion on that? I mean, we are going to see this again. And obviously, whatever bylaw we go through, we'll go through public hearings. So councillor Deandrea.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only part that I'm, I'm, I'm still not, I don't know if I understood is what we had before, that only one unit in, if you have three different units in a property, only one could be short term rental. But now that we said the principle can still also do that too, as long as it's owner operator. And so are we eliminating, are we still sticking with only one unit per property? Could be short rent. Are we still sticking with this principle?
At, at this point, I, I don't know. So I need to, I need to go back and look at our bylaw and look at these re-prioritized goals because they're prioritized differently now. So I need to look at how, what the implications of the bylaw as written are. So I need to look at how, what the implications of the bylaw as written are and whether we need to make tweaks to the bylaw to more closely reflect these goals in this priority.
Thank you.
Okay, uh moved and seconded on the regular, uh councillor Ludwig, did you have something to say?
I I just wanted to say for the record to councillor Deandrade's question, which is a valid question, I would still support just one per lot. I think from a community standpoint, that's a more sustainable number.
It comes down to that question of appropriate scale for a neighborhood. Yeah, yeah. Okay, the uh I'm going to call the question, all in favor of the resolution is presented? Thank you very much. Eric, does that end you?
It does.
And Shannon, you as well?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, I I do need a motion to receive the report. Uh, council, like councillor Crowe, councillor Deandrade, thank you. All in favor of receipt? Go there. Thank you very much. Uh, I am going to go to inquiries, because I I know there are people who are watching us and and who have views on this issue, and I'd be uh welcome to have them express those views now, bearing in mind that we have a relatively short time, but we do have time for inquiries. So Rebecca.
Yes, um, if anyone has questions, please raise your hand. I see you have one person with their hand up already. I will move him over.
Thank you.
Does Delaney should be joining you soon?
Okay, you're unmuted, Mr. Delaney. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I just, I'm not gonna, I just wanna, one question, just one question, just to clarify. Um, in twenty eighteen, there was seventy five units with the um business license. Um, in twenty twenty one, there's now a hundred, so that we're talking about twenty five units of housing. Uh, I I think that was the numbers that were given. Um, which is a theory is being put forward that in a vacuum, that these are the ones that responsible for causing the loss of long term rental housing. Um, so with that, I'm not going to debate that. I mean, it is debatable. I'd like to balance that out um with the fact that um Venture Village is under construction with fifty four units, Franklin Road, three units. Kowana's just had seventy five units approved, and there's another um application for Gibson's Way for ten, and these are all long term rental units. So that's a hundred and forty two rental units in the pipeline now. On top of that, there is forty more supportive housing units in School Road for a total of one hundred and eighty two units of rental housing, combined with another twenty two that have come on stream with the Ritz Landing that's available for long term rentals. So seriously, after three years and three hours, and you should be giving yourself a pat on the back for the two hundred and four units that are in this pipeline instead of beating up the community and yourselves over twenty five units. So, you know, you can answer that how you want, but, you know, seriously, it's um, I don't know what it's about. Just don't know what it's about. So next, but next person can answer a question if you, you know, if you can't say why or address this, it's just, it's missing from the equation.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a stab at that, just briefly, Mr. Delaney, without debate, but uh the biggest problem we we have and we hear about relative to short room rentals is that they are unmanaged. Uh, so you get the complaints of the of the uh, the the rental houses rented out every weekend to a different person, different group of people, the noise and the parties and the issues. So we're looking at more or not. Not looking at saying, let's have less short term rentals, because I don't think you heard that here today. I do think you heard prioritizing of long term rentals. But I think what you did here is the short term rentals that we do have, we want them to be organized. We want to be owner occupied, so there's some accountability and responsibility for them onsite at all times. Because that is not happening. And that's what it, that's what is disrupting neighborhoods today. Is the the fact that there are many vacant homes as you go along streets. There are many different residents of those homes on a on a weekly basis. And in some cases, those residents are very disruptive and are not managed. That's the issue we're trying to deal with, not necessarily the number of short term rentals. Although we would like to see those those vacant homes become long term rentals. Next question. Rebecca, anybody else?
Uh, yes, just one moment. Kathleen Vance is joining you.
Kathleen, you're still muted?
But that, I didn't know I was up. Okay, I just wanted to say how enormously I was impressed by this whole exercise. Sitting here watching, go through all this and the complexity of the issues. And the only thing I could add is this notion of incentives that came up about incentives for long term um rentals. But what I see right now is an enormous incentive system for S T Rs that is sort of under the table in the sense that people have this income we talked about of thousands of dollars a month. But the amenities of Gibson's, all the money for the upkeep of our parks and everything are all provided free of charge. There's no, other people are developing their lots. There's no development charges for that. They're not, as you say, there's not business license. So in a way, there's this enormous incentive that exists right now for S T Rs. And that's why I think, you know, it's not, as though it's now neutral.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make that point, and I I'm just so impressed with what you did this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Rebecca?
If if there's anyone else who wishes to address counsel on this issue, please raise your hand. I see no other hands raised, Mayor Bemish.
Okay, well, thank you very much, counsel. It uh it it's a difficult issue. We we struggled with for a while, but I really feel like we had some consensus today. It's a very good conversation uh among us. I appreciate that. Well, now uh take a motion to adjourn this meeting. Councillor Crowe, councillor Deandrade, thank you. All in favor of adjourning? Thank you very much, and we'll see you in just a few minutes. Take care. Thanks.